I'd like to call this regular meeting of council for Tuesday, October 11th to order. May I have a motion to adopt the October 11th, 2016 regular meeting agenda? I have an amendment to the agenda in regards to the clean water wastewater grant program, which we'll be discussing as a late item. So may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda amendment? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? May I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammett. Anyone opposed? Or all in favor, I should say? Anyone opposed, motion is carried. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt September 19th, 2016 special meetings of building camera minutes as presented? Counselor Hammett, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. May I have a motion to adopt the September 19th, 2016 regular meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. And may I have a motion to adopt the September 23rd, 2016 special meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Tripp?
Yes, may I open for an item discussion on there?
Sure.
Just need to get down to those minutes. There were just a couple of, just a couple of things that possibly could be made just a little bit clearer. In item A, what is that under? For A unfinished business? It says potential to bring up with the minister that not all of council, that probably should be supported, that not all of council supported the policy. So it's just taking out the did not support because then we end up with a double negative there. So it would make more sense if it just said not all of council supported the policy. And then the other, it was just a typo. Council lot Butler on the motion there, Thompson, Hammett resolved the council due terms to have. And it's just a typo. Council lot Butler opposed the motion, should be councillor.
Okay, so it's just a housekeeping item?
Just two items, just those two housekeeping items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed, motion is carried. Okay, we move along now to the report, written reports of council. May I have a motion to receive all the written reports of council? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Tripp, all in favor?
And requesting discussion?
There's no discussion on written reports for receiving them.
I have a request to bring a resolution forward on there. In my report, and I did talk about this, I believe, the last time when I sent out an email reminder to everyone that I would be bringing this item forward.
Notice of motion.
Notice of motion, I sent out an email to everyone early, quite early on, I believe, saying that I would be putting forward this notice of motion.
Yes, a notice of motion.
So would it be possible to bring this forward with, with two amendments that I would have to it? Two slight amendments.
Counselor Thompson.
Would it not be, because there's only four of us here tonight, to have you bring that forward at our next regular meeting?
I could do that with the amendments.
With the amendments, and then, you know, there'll be more.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if in our agenda layout, if we could have, potentially have an area for notice of motions. If they're, you know, it's the second time this has happened in the agenda process where it's been within a council report. So I'm wondering if we had a subtitle on the agenda that had notice of motions that a councillor could, at least that could be discussed at that point in the agenda. So it'd make it a little bit cleaner for council, saying we receive the reports, you move on, and then you could have your opportunity for notice of motion. So if that was the situation, we could bring forward a couple of, we could bring forward an option for maybe when the future council meetings, it would show that new area. So then that would have to be adopted in the procedure bylaw along with the, I knew she was going to say that. But the procedure bylaw along with the way that we outline the agenda. So if that was the will of council, then we could bring forward a couple of suggestions and the council could talk about that. We could do it at committee in the whole meeting. And maybe for the, what the next upcoming committee in the whole meetings, we could have that prepared with the agenda, with the preparation of the procedure bylaw. And then we can just talk about that and the council could discuss that.
That won't excuse councillor that little thing.
Absolutely, because it'll be done at a committee in the whole meeting, so everybody will be participating in that discussion. And you could talk about the mechanism and how you would like to have notice of motions brought forward.
Would I still be, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Would I still be able to bring this motion forward then at the next regular meeting? Or do we table that until we go through this process?
So, if I was to make that recommendation, if you have that notice of motion section in there, I think you're giving notice of motion tonight, that you'd like to, it would almost be the same process that in the, in the agenda, there would be the opportunity for a councillor to bring forward a notice of motion, similar to what you're doing right now. So then that would be, you'd be providing that notice to council that that motion is coming forward at the next meeting. So give them the time to think about it. So I think council's seen it. The process that we undertake now moving forward will be before you shortly, and you've essentially provided your notice.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I will have a couple of very minor changes to the motion, but they will certainly affect how the motion is carried out. So if council is okay with that, then I will email out what my intended change is to this motion, and then that could go on the next agenda.
Counselor Thompson?
Would it be, just as a suggestion, in addition to your report, do a memorandum to council stating this is the resolution as a separate item?
Yeah.
And not as part of your report? So that it can be dealt with separate and apart?
I think in that notice of motion period, Mr. Mayor, that that section of the agenda under notice of motion, the councillor, once that topic came up, you would ask for councillors to, if there's any notice of motions, the motion would be that the councillor is going to be providing this notice of motion, and you're right, that memorandum should follow it, so the rest of council understands the nature of it. Because you're providing the notice, the rest of council, just like staff bringing forward a report at committee in the whole gets a two-week resting period, you get that resting period so council can look into it.
But this, this is kind of like a request for decision until we get the procedure bylaw amended.
Yeah.
So I was just, just for ease of dealing with stuff.
Counselor Hammett?
Thank you. I believe at the last council meeting we had, when this issue arose, we decided at that time, there was a decision made that notices of motion would not be put in council's report, they would be sent out as a separate memorandum. So what you're saying, we've already discussed, and it's true, that's what we had decided. So I think that would be working.
Are you comfortable with that, Counselor Tripp?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. Moving on to the next item, which is the verbal report from council representative to the RDKB, which would be myself. I have no report this time because we were fortunate enough to have Director Rowley Russell present this morning, and he took all the conversation right out. So I have nothing to say. Moving on to recommendations from staff for decision. Subject matter is the gallery two revised lease and fee for service funding agreement. The recommendation is that we approve the revised 2016 gallery two fee for service funding agreement between the city of Grand Forks and gallery two. Furthermore, my recommendation in regards to the lease agreement would be to refer it back to staff for more consultation. Counselor Thompson?
I would also like to have the funding agreement referred to the budget, 2017 budgeting That's when we're dealing with all of the other requests unless it's the wish of this council to proceed with it tonight.
I believe the funding agreement is for 2016, is in not to extend it in December of this year.
It does, and Mr. Mayor, there's, there, as per the agreement that we have right now, they are to be before council asking for the funds for 2017 in September and October of the year prior. So they're meeting their obligations right now as per the agreement. So we would have it, as Counselor Thompson pointed out, it would be part of the budget process. But the reality that they need to know now is, is that approved in 2017? Because as they're moving forward, they're basically, if it's not, then they have a three months notice period, so to speak, to cease operations, I think. I think that's the rationale behind that. But they would before council to ask for that funding for the following year. If there was going to be a change in that operating agreement, council would be in consultation with them in January through the first half of, first quarter of 2017 to provide them an opportunity to figure out what to do.
I think we're pretty hard pressed not to fund them for 2017.
Counselor Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to refer this back to staff, would, I guess my question is twofold. Would the information that we would receive back adequately inform us or inform us in a way that we might sufficiently change direction? That would be the first question. And the second question would be, would we be able to get that information before the deadline of what they need is met or runs out?
First, Gato.
Mr. Mayor, the, there's the two agreements that we have. So there's a 25-year lease agreement with the gallery two folks. There's some clauses in that lease agreement that are, you know, in the nature that the council should discuss with them. The servicing agreement for the fee for service is, there's nothing new that we would present to you. You saw the information, you saw the financials, already the discussion we did before council is, if council was into a situation that, you know, favorably, the community wasn't in a financially favorable situation, then they would want to have that discussion regarding reducing the amount of funding. But essentially, they came today and asked you for the $142,000, I think that nothing was changing. They said they were looking for the same funding, they wanted more, but they were going to stick with the same amount. So they've essentially asked you for that today. I don't think anything would change from staff's perspective, unless you wanted more information from the folks from the gallery, then they would have to provide that to you. We had the opportunity to hear from them today, should we want to hear any more from them. If that would be the will of council, council wants more information from them, we would want to understand what that would look like and send them that request to report back to council.
Thank you.
Counselor Hammett?
Yeah, I'm not sure by sending it back to staff for more information, what further information we can garner from it. We did hear from them today, and I think that we got the information, I think it was pretty well explained from their perspective, what their ask is and how they're managing their affairs. As far as the renewal of the lease, the amended, I'm just curious as to what's been amended? Is there, is there something clear cut that shows what changed from when we signed it last?
Yeah, the first one, I guess. First, you.
No, I could recommend, Mr. Mayor, that our deputy corporate officer was working with our, with our team on dealing with this issue, and she's away on holidays this week. It would make, the lease could be set aside until the next meeting of council for her to be able to go through those changes with council and maybe in a committee in the whole meeting. This opportunity right now, and they're very minor in nature, but I think that there's one larger item that has to be discussed in there. But it is a 25-year lease, so we're already into this lease. I think it's only been since maybe 2009.
Exactly. 2008, I believe.
2008, 2009. So we're, we've got another, you know, 10 years, 15 years on this thing. So I think we can talk about the details in that as we move forward. So what I would recommend, that we set this aside, we could talk about the servicing agreement, and then have Sarah talk to us about these details.
Yes, because there are some articles in the lease which I'm a bit concerned with, and I think we should have some specialty counsel on that we're not addressed in the changes. Counselor Thompson?
I would be prepared to put forward a resolution that the council for the city of Grand Forks approves the fee for service funding for the, between the city of Grand Forks and gallery two at $142,000 for the year, this will be in 2017.
That is not the request, this is 2016.
2016's been passed, we're looking at 17.
Then something's wrong.
It's causing a peckle, because what they're looking for is probably for next year.
Because the documentation that's attached is the 2016 service agreement.
But they, they were required to be before us for the 2017.
Their year-end is probably different than ours.
There was a letter that the art gallery had put in, and that was for the request for 2017, which will be coming as summary of the information items for the next meeting for council to consider. And the reason being is that in, in the agreement, that there's supposed to be a resolution that comes before the end of November for the following year. The one that's presented to council today is the one that was never completed for 2016.
Which expires in December.
Oh, yes, and so that's why it's put before council.
That's right, that's exactly.
Okay, okay, so then I'll change that to the appropriate year.
Yeah. So basically, the motion should be that we, council approves the funding agreement for 2016.
That's right.
And refers the lease agreement back to the staff for further information.
Okay.
I can have that, can I have a mover on that?
I'll make that, yes.
One second. All in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried.
Pardon the pun, but we're trying to trip it over each other.
Easy visual to show, isn't it? Next item on is the manager of building inspection and bylaw services. The subject matter is the contracted bylaw enforcement officer. And the recommendation is that council receives a report and considers approving an extension of the contracted bylaw services for the remainder of 2016. The extended bylaw service would be funded through the bylaw enforcement budget, approved in 2016 financial plan, the 2017 budget will reflect the continuation of the bylaw service position until October 30th, 2017. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, a second.
Second.
Counselor Hammett, any discussion? Counselor Hammett?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I know we need to renew, and I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering if that contract from October through till April should be based on a full-time position, since once we get snowfall, it's going to be hard for the on second premise, plus there's no water notices, unless we move over into parking and other areas.
Parking.
And the bylaws, yes, the bylaw updates into the, that's right. Okay, forget that.
Counselor Thompson?
It is 40 hours a week, we get the benefit of weekends and evenings and, you know, he's, he.
And I forgot about the updating of the bylaws onto the website.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. Next subject matter, from our manager of development engineering services, the flood plain exemption request for property located at 6116 12th Street legally described as lot one, district lot 32, plan KAP 90023. The recommendation is council approves the site specific exemption request to vary the flood construction level from 516.600 meters to 515.600 meters to install a hot water tank and heating source .6096 meters off the floor, the first level of the home mounted on a metal stand subject to the applicant registering, a section 219 covenant on title saving the city harmless in case of flooding. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. From our manager of development engineering services, subject matter subdivision application for 6370 12th Street and 6360 12th Street. The recommendation is council approves the two subdivision applications for 6370 12th Street, 6380 12th Street. May I have a mover? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. Move on to the information items. Youth Parliament of DC Alumni Society, subject matter, DC youth parliament's 86th parliament will hold its parliamentary session in Victoria, the provincial legislative chambers from December 27th to the 31st, 2016. The recommendation, council received for information to correspondence from the youth parliamentary of DC alumni society regarding its parliamentary session in Victoria on December 27th to the 31st, 2016. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammett, unless there's any discussion, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried.
I just wanted to comment that Jacob Nosery, who spoke to us last year and was represented there, is also going to be at this youth parliament, is part of them.
Thank you. To the bylaw section, from our chief financial officer, subject matter, the 2017 permissive tax exemption bylaw 2033. Recommendation is that council gives final reading to the bylaw 2033, 2017 permissive tax exemptions. Mover, Counselor Thompson, second, or Counselor Tripp? All in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. Our manager of development engineering services, subject matter, Johnson's Flat Wetland Protected Natural Area Dedication, subject matter, recommendation, council gives first and second readings of the proposed Johnson's Flat Wetlands Nature Park Bylaw number 2035, 2016. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Hammett, secondary, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. Our late item. The recommendation is that council recommends the city applies for the new construction of well number two to the new clean water wastewater grant program, application that closes in November 2016. May I have a mover on that? Counselor Thompson, secondary, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? Anyone to pull up discussion?
Yeah.
Pull. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering if we could just have a, sort of just a synopsis, just a little synopsis of this, and this may not be so much for us as it may be for the gallery that don't have any information provided to them for this.
Letter from CA Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the UBCN this year, the provincial government and federal government has announced $400 for, $400 million to be allocated before the, I believe, the 23rd or 29th of November of this year. It will be primarily associated with clean drinking water and clean wastewater facilities upgrades. The project has to be shelf-ready, and the money has to be expended in 2017. We have applied for well number two, $1.2 million worth of work to be completed on the replacement of well number two in the Building Canada Fund. We haven't heard anything from that program. That's a $200 million program across Canada. But the provincial government has announced, provincial government and federal government have announced $400 million for BC alone. So being that there's less than 200 municipalities in DC, that would be an allocation share of about $2 million per municipality. So I think my math is just gay on that. But what I'm saying, though, is for us to be aware of the greatest opportunity for our city would be within that program, which would take the burden off of our 20-year capital plan for the replacement of that infrastructure. So it's 17% funding from the, from the city's portion, so the other funds are matched federally and provincially. Essentially, we would have to come up with 17% of the $1.2 million, which we have planned for in our long-term capital planning process. So we're excited about the opportunity, we think it's a great opportunity to deal with that longstanding issue. And our meeting with Minister Fassbender last year and this year was in and around that topic of asset management, and this is essentially asset management. So we, we are in a strong, strong position for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, and I think the, the funding formula cost sharing is even better than what we had anticipated, a third, a third, a third. But feds are coming up with 50%, the province 33% and municipality 17, so.
Excellent ratio.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll call a question, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carried. We're moving along to our questions from the public and the media, and again, may I caution everyone that the subject matter must be related to the agenda items this evening.
Les Johnson, GFTV. I'm curious with the contracted bylaw enforcement officer, he may be taking over when, basically the, when retirement happening over here? How about the other hats that he wears? Building inspector, stuff like that? Have you guys got plans for, for that stuff being taken over by somebody? I'm just curious.
We have an RFPO, we have our RFPO for inspecting. But there are no plans for a bylaw inspector dispatch, just for a building inspector.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have a full-time position opening for the imminent departure of Mr. Copan, which is unfortunate for our organization, but obviously, I'm sure he's looking forward to his retirement, and he's been smiling quite a bit at work lately, so. But we do have plans for a, for a full-time building inspector that will have the obligation of bylaw inspection. Mr. Bud.
Alcock?
Alcock. Sorry, I just lost one. He's been working on cleaning up some of the longstanding issues, and we're hoping that over the course of the next short term, that he'll be able to help us during that season, because it's always building inspection permits and citizen complaints coming in at the same time. During the winter months, we have several things for the bylaw officers to do, so there's quite a bit to be done there. So again, we don't have any long-term plans for a permanent bylaw officer, this is just, the long-term plans are around Mr. Copan's position for the organization, and that's our long-term objective right now, we're just doing a little bit of housekeeping with Mr. Alcock assisting right now.
Lenny.
Yes, Russia, thank you. Kate from the Gazette. I was just wondering if the councillors who are absent tonight are on official business or for some reason?
Pardon me?
I was wondering if the councillors who are unavailable tonight are on, on official city business?
I believe one of our councillor has a personal issue and was unable to attend, and the other councillor was loose, still away. Yeah. I have no, not officially, yeah, it's all personal.
Personal, not city?
No, it's personal, exactly. And we were informed prior to them being present.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't.
Gentleman in the second row.
Jane Cook. I wonder if the building inspector position is full-time or proposed full-time? Have you done a current appraisal of what it would be to contract it out on a piecemeal basis to the regional district? And has the, has the total of actual purpose that have been issued, has that been compared to what has taken place in other areas that have cities, that are cities of these size? My concern is that is there really a need for a full-time building inspector? And if a piece, if arrangements could be made with the regional district to hire someone as, on an as-needed basis, that could have some financial benefit? as, on an as-needed basis, that could have some financial benefit?
Okay.
We'll let Counselor Thompson weigh on this one, but the first, the last question, partially, we've already attempted that with regional and was not cost efficient.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We, at one time, did contract with the regional district for building inspection services. We severed that contract and hired our own building inspector, which didn't look out for a number of reasons. We went back to the regional district, but there were complaints that the services being provided weren't timely, and that there were delays for people wanting to do construction on our own municipality, and so it was felt that it was in the best interest of the city and its citizens to have our own building inspector. So, from my own perspective, and I can't speak for anybody else on council, I would not be interested in, in returning to the regional district without service, because the, the area that they cover is too big and is not beneficial to, to us or to our residents.
Well, be that as may, as of May, that was then, and this is now, I believe, we should currently, you should look at the current amount of building permits that have been applied for, and how much work is entailed in doing that job, as opposed to carte blanche hiring a full-time inspector, whatever the fees are, $100,000 plus, and see what could be done as far as cutting costs.
We'll let our C.A.O. weigh on this, but just prior to that, there, the permit amounts that have been applied for this year were quite high. If you've been following some of the meetings, you would have seen them. There was a lot of applications and a lot of building going on in Grand Forks.
And, Mr. Mayor, one thing to add to that is that, you know, the, the question is a fair question. We have, we have reviewed this, and I think one of the other questions is regarding the many other hats that the manager wears. In the organization, they wear many hats. Building inspection is part of that process, care of reporting, carbon, carbon footprint analysis, all of these different things that we do building, regarding our buildings and facilities. One would think that our managers just simply wear one hat, but they don't work under that one umbrella. Our managers in our organization, they support the other managers in all aspects of their operation, so that's one of the key pieces for us, is it would be nice if we had one person who was simply dedicated to one task, but unfortunately for us as an operation, we can't afford to operate that way. The other thing that we, that we look at is, from an economic development tool, Mr. Mayor, the most important thing that we can have is an ambassador for our city that worked for the City of Grand Forks. The reason that we are moving forward on this model is Mr. Copan has brought in an incredible amount of, of relationship building with the construction community, back to our community, and I think as we move forward, that's one of the, the, the things that we're known for now, is, is the relationship that Mr. Copan and the city has had with the builders in our community. It's been very, very formidable and very, very, I, I think he's gone that extra mile. But again, back to that piece, I can't stress enough the amount of extra tasks that one does in the management team within this organization. It is not just simply one task. It will be, you, Les talked about the number of hats, and it's more of a, a collection of hats, because they're wearing a different one each day. And, and I can assure council, and I can assure the community, that one manager does not just simply deal with one task. I mean, they are across the board. I mean, he can do everything from, from finance, all the way into, you know, assisting with some of the financials, budgeting for his department, doing these things, all the way through to assisting with public works, all the way assisting through with some of the intellectual knowledge that goes across our organization. Mr. Copan being here for 20...
33 years.
33 years. He brings a lot to this. My numbers are off.
You've been hurrying him.
Exactly. But again, I can't stress that enough for us, that, for us to cut back on person or organization at that, at that capacity would be a significant impact to us. But prior to this, we were spending a significant amount of money with the regional district, and it was more cost-effective for us to bring it in-house, and I think that goes beyond what we're talking about today, it's the other values that we bring to the relationship with the industry. So, again, good point. I think it's something that is good to have you brought to our attention, that, you know, this, the community is looking at these things, but I think it's something that we are aware of, and we are on top of when it comes to that, so...
And if I may just weigh in on that, the level of service that Mr. Copan provides, it's come across my desk with comments that he's very, very accommodating to the residents. He's not just strictly a building inspector, per se. When he goes out and there are questions asked of him, he actually helps the people that he serves. It's not just that he goes there if it doesn't, if it's not right, he doesn't red flag it, he accommodates the individuals, which is very good, being a good ambassador to our community, which is what we need.
My other question was on well number two and $1.2 million. I thought originally, when well number two was talked about replacing, it was about $600,000. So if, if that's correct, and if you're fortunate enough to get a $1.2 million grant, will some of that money go to improving other parts of the water infrastructure?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, no, the, the grant application is for the, for the well itself and the connectivity. I believe there's an integration in with the school district on this process that has been established within interpretive programs, so no, the money would have to be focused on that specific project. Should there be any additional funds, we would have to be creative in how we approach the province, on saying that it related to that well number two project, we can't just simply take the money and, and disperse it amongst the water utility or another project. We would have to be clear with the province, or seek their approval, and if we had their approval. Back to those numbers that we referred to, I believe that we had a grant application in there for the engineering of them. And if I spoke out of turn, I apologize, when it comes to the $1.2 million, but I do believe that we did apply for the $1.2 million, including the engineering on that project. If it is wrong, we can ask the, we can ask the question and, and find out, and get back to you on that, just to confirm the number.
I'm just wondering if the application for $1.2 million is done from the perspective that the government might only give you $650,000 or $800,000? Is that possible?
You may have actually, now that you've said that, I think our share, we were looking for the proportion of funding from the provincial and federal level, so that may have been just a little bit more than $600,000, with a third coming from the municipality, so maybe we were a little bit on the high end of the 600s, but we would have the expectation that the grant application for the city's contribution piece would be in that neighborhood of 17% of the total value of the project.
So if it comes in at $750,000, it'd be 17%?
Exactly. Yeah, so if we can shoot for being under budget, that would be great. We're going to maximize those federal and provincial dollars that we can get, though.
How can I, one last question. How can I find on the city website, perhaps? What all is involved with the building inspection department? How many inspections there's been? How many follow-ups and so on for 2015 and 2014, 2015, and even 2016? I'd like to get a comparison, because I still have it in my mind that the regional district, possibility, I know there's a class three building inspector that works for the regional district that lives in town and spends one or two days a week here on behalf of the regional district, who might be able to serve that same job. So I'd like to see a breakdown and then do a comparison between what our city is doing and what the regional district is doing. How many permits have been issued? How many permits are followed up on and so on?
C.A.O.
Mr. Mayor, that, that analysis is completed from when we took over, because not only did we have to pay for the building inspector here, we had to pay for backup coverage, and then they had to pay for a portion of the chief building inspector in, in Trail, so part of that process was outlined in the report that we previously brought to council. So if you'd like to go back onto the city's website and look under the council reports, under the, on the search menu, I'm not sure if it's there or not, but the report, when we removed the services from the regional district, all that information was done in an open public meeting. So again, it was done in the public, and the report is available for you, and those reports will be there for you to review. The building inspector has brought forward the number of permits. That has been constantly reported on in the community. Whether or not he reports back to that site 16 or 17 times, that won't be available in those reports, based on those permit values. We talk about our customer service levels, levels there. The other information that you would be able to obtain would be going back into the, on the city's website, the, and the staff reports, I'm not sure of Mr. Copan, where the permit values have been located, but I would have a hard time presenting to you the other tasks that he does. I do have work plans for each of the managers that talk about the different things that we do. So again, that's not something that is, that's something that the employees do with, with the C.A.O., it's not for public review and scrutiny. It's something that I review for council to scrutinize. But again, if you'd like to go back into that regional district report that was provided, I believe in 2012, when we gave notice to the regional district, and then in the beginning part of 2013, you would be able to research that report, because it was available at an open council meeting.
Can you tell me where I find that on the city website?
Under agendas, council agendas. So go under the drop-down menu under council, go under agendas, and then research back under that. Probably type in the keywords is building inspection, you'll probably get the full report on that. I, I can't remember the numbers that need to be even quoted on that today, but I believe that they substantiated the business case on, but bringing it back in, sure.
Okay.
This lady in the second row.
Gloria Cook. What years was it that, what year was it that you ceased to have a building inspector then, full-time?
Our own?
Yes.
That would have been in the 1990s. Early 90s, I think.
I, yeah, I don't...
Yeah. 1992 is popping into my brain, but I don't know, it's around there.
So the, that's, that's quite a while ago. And this, this situation that we have now has been going on since then approximately?
What, what situation?
I, I asked, when did you cease to have a full-time inspector, building inspector? Like you mentioned, the situation with Mr. Copan began whenever, but when did, when did the previous situation end, his start?
I'm thinking it was about 1992. We only had it for, I don't even know if we had, had that person employed for a year, if memory serves me correctly. Yeah, it just didn't...
So what I, what I was getting at was, that was the situation, if that was correct, in around 92 and before, what you explained about how it didn't, a full-time one didn't, wasn't needed, or didn't work out, whatever it was?
Sir, are you asking how long regional has been taking care of the inspections? Is that the nature of the question?
No, just, when did, when did the situation change from you, the city having a full-time inspector?
The situation changed because the individual in the position didn't work out. And because that person didn't work out...
With the regional district.
We went back to the regional district, and they provided us building inspection services again.
And then that was for like a decade, or?
Yeah, that was until...
Until 2013.
Till 2013.
So approximately 20 years or so.
Yeah.
I just thought maybe the scenarios that applied then are not the same as now, for example.
What is it, tell me?
Thanks.
I will grant you one more.
So, the, the discussion of Mr. Copan wearing multiple hats, if you hire a new-time building, a full-time building inspector that's not from this town and doesn't have 30 years of Mr. Copan's experience, how can you realistically expect that a new full-time inspector is going to feel the same, do, do the same amount of side work with all the different departments and the like that this current building inspector has? So, he's not going to want to work in five or six departments at the same time.
If he's going to, Mr. Mayor, if he's going to work for the city, he will have to.
And simple explanation is it's going to be very hard, for sure, because with the experience that Mr. Copan carries, with the knowledge of the city, it's, it's going to be almost very difficult to replace an individual of that magnitude in the corporation.
I also understand that the building, the provincial government in 2017 will require that all towns or cities have a minimum class one building inspector.
Yes, we are all aware of that in the legislation.
I'm just asking to confirm that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, unless there are any other questions or concerns, may I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Hammitt, the secondary, Counselor Tripp, all in favor? This meeting is adjourned.